But you don't have to have it.
That's how it is.
So then you should be fine.
Just numbers.
We probably enjoy that more than that.
All right.
It's seven o'clock, so call meeting to order. And all councilors are present except for Larry. He is joining us via video and Sergeant Sean, Staff Sergeant Sean Maxwell is also joining us via video. So, welcome everybody. And the first item on the agenda is to adopt the agenda. Chris? Any questions, concerns, something emergent to add? Not all in favor? Opposed, but it's carried. And council table, Donna?
I move for information. My first question is, um, eight five three seven nine, full style and co garbage bins. So I take it those are our normal garbage bins?
That's right, three are normal.
Okay, and so my question with that is, how many is that? And how long do they usually last before you have to load them?
That is thirty-two bins, includes delivery as well. Generally speaking, lifespan is about fifteen years, but they range at plus or minus five years. And that's basically based off where it goes. And if the receiving garbage is consistently wet. Even if it covers the bottom several quicker versus standard.
So with the thirty-two bins that you've got, how often do you order them, like?
Every year.
Every year, possibly that many?
Uh, roughly, that's actually a smaller order. We have a budget of fifty thousand.
Okay. Thank you for your story.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have one more. I noticed that there was under just this twenty twenty twelve thirteen Safeway, and it says staff relations, but there's my own bunch of them. Yeah.
That was my question.
What, what are these?
Those are the Christmas gift cards that staff got and fire personnel.
So all staff? Is there a portion, like, there's like?
We gave fifty-six to staff members, Shannon, and sixteen, I believe, went to, uh, fire as well.
Oh, okay, good, thank you.
What was the, uh, legal expense for the broadband shared with Butter?
Um, Derek, could you answer that one, please?
Well, there was, um, legal expenses that were aside after doing that broadband project we were, we were looking towards. So when the southeast of Alberta, we had a bunch of rural municipalities that were looking for broadband service. We had to decide, right, four hundred fifty thousand per capita. And so this was going up for some other, uh, legal expertise to see if we should or shouldn't pursue that project. And this is what eventually led to the canceling of that project was this legal. So the bill was shared amongst, uh, seven or eight, I believe, despite.
Okay, I just thought something bad was coming from.
No.
Okay, fair enough.
Okay.
Well, technically, it wasn't good, I suppose.
Any other questions or concerns on the table? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, that is carried. Okay, item two on the agenda is the delegation. And the only delegation we have tonight is from the RCMP. So Staff Sergeant Sean, you can go ahead.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, it's quarterly report from the RCMP. Um, before I even go into it, I'm, I, I, I'm, I'm pleased to note that, uh, all of our numbers are way down. Uh, not only over the past five years, but, uh, you know, in terms of, uh, change even from last year. Um, to just, uh, look under persons crimes, you know, obviously assaults, that sort of thing. We're down sixty-five percent over this time last year. And overall forty-seven percent, uh, from a change between twenty sixteen and now. Um, obviously, I would suggest that a lot of this is to do with the pandemic, uh, and, and, and people just not.
Screaming clock.
Sorry, is that for me?
No, no, sorry, sorry.
No, it's okay, it's okay, just making sure.
Carry on, we're just, we just experienced a computer blackout.
Oh, okay.
But that's okay, continue.
But anyway, I mean, we're dealing with, uh, you know, five assaults for this quarter, um, you know, which is i- in some cases as little as, as, as a third or, or half of what we've previously experienced in, in other years in, in the town, and I'm just, um, those are good, those are good numbers, in fact, uh, great numbers. I don't see us being, those, unfortunately, I don't see those being sustained. Um, you know, o- over the next, you know, I, 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 I don't know, I can't give you a, um, you know, a specific time, but I mean, is, as people get out and about and, and the weather will start to warm up again, we seem to be in the deep freeze right now. Um, you know, that's kind of where things are sitting at. Uh, the nice thing is, is that compared to the last time I was in front of council, uh, the one individual dealing, we dealt with, with relation to criminal harassment and various things like that, seems to have, uh, settled down quite a bit, which is good. Uh, so, you know, that was definitely skewing our numbers, uh, from the previous quarter. Uh, moving down to property crime, and again, we're, we're at twenty-seven property crimes. We're, you know, three break and enters, seven theft under five thousands, four fraud, uh, thirteen mischief to property. That's a da- that's a forty-three percent, uh, decrease since twenty sixteen, a forty-seven percent decrease since last year. Um, you know, again, you know, only time's really gonna tell in terms of that's going to be something that's sustainable. Right now, we are definitely aware of, you know, who's, uh, you know, possibly incarcerated that is used to doing property crimes and, and who's out and about. Uh, we keep a list of those people, if they're on conditions, uh, you know, we try to get, you know, keep in touch with them on a regular basis and make sure that, uh, that they're abiding by whatever conditions that they're on, of course. Uh, but, uh, you know, uh, right now, the numbers are s- are speaking for themselves in terms of things. Um, our other criminal code, if you look at that, uh, over last year to this year, you know, we're down forty-eight percent. It does list us up twenty-two percent from twenty sixteen to now. I mean, other criminal code can, i- i- in a lot of cases, it goes hand in hand with some other stuff. Somebody that, uh, you know, we catch doing some property crimes might be breaching, uh, and failing to comply with some releases and things like that. Um, so they're not usually done on their same way. I mean, two offensive weapons calls, uh, that's just people found in possession of things that they shouldn't have. Uh, four disturb the peace, three fail to comply and breaches them, two other criminal code. Um, anybody got any questions with regards to any of these right now? We really haven't had anything huge happen in the past quarter, which is, it, it, it's nice. Uh, if we go on to the second page, I mean, along with all those numbers, uh, a lot of the other numbers are low. You know, our, our, our drug enforcement, everything is, is, is down for this quarter. Um, you know, federal is, is, is definitely down. I mean, it sounded one, it's either down fifty percent over five years or seventy-five percent over, you know, the past year. Uh, you look at the liquor act, we had one charge, um, eleven mental health act, that's probably the only one that still remains significant that we're seeing. Um, I'll go into a little bit about what we're doing with that, uh, towards the end of the meeting. Um, and eleven other provincial stats, uh, you know, people are just, you know, obviously with things being closed down, traffic is just not as much. School was shuttered until early January, and we're out there trying to pay attention to, you know, the, the various schools every week, so. Uh, but even if you look down, you know, our municipal bylaw, traffic is down, well, it's three, I guess, actually technically that's higher than it has been, but that's one a month maximum. Uh, municipal bylaws is at twelve, and that's low. You know, going into, uh, collisions, even collisions are, um, you know, even though our non-reportable property damage is up from, up to four, down from two, our total MVC, uh, is, is down forty-five percent over the previous year, down thirty percent over the past five years. Well, basically, the numbers at this point are trending downwards, which is nice to see. And, uh, you know, outside of that, just looking at, see if council has any, uh, any questions, comments, or concerns about those? I'm assuming not.
Not seen any hands.
Okay. Uh, just going down there, we're looking at, uh, you know, false alarms, or it's seven, you know, for the past, uh, two, but, but even three years, uh, false alarms have really gone down, which is, uh, which is always a good thing to see. Uh, false nine-one-one calls, those have, I would say they remain steady over the past five years. I mean, up to ten, low of eight, or, you know, we're, we're at eight right now. Our suspicious persons vehicle property, uh, that's one of the few things that I like to see remaining steady because it means people are calling us. And, uh, that's, you know, th- the minute people stop calling us, uh, that I think sends a message in and of itself that either they're not seeing our presence out there, or we're not, we're not helping to solve, uh, you know, what their issues are. So that, that getting even slightly higher, you know, you know, if we looked at that compared to some other things, maybe it would be telling us a story that we need to be concentrating on certain areas, but right now with numbers trending downwards, um, I'm, I'm happy that people are calling things in. You know, one person reported missing, um, we haven't had any major, uh, missing persons for quite a while now. Uh, everybody seems to be getting found relatively quickly. If not, uh, you know, they're called in in the morning or, and, and found by the afternoon type thing. Uh, spousal abuse is at nine, that's still, that's third highest as it's been in the past five years. Obviously, I think the pandemic's going with that, but, um, um, you know, spousal abuse can be anything from, uh, you know, people in a committed relationship now to people who had been previously in a relationship, um, who, who don't regularly see each other and, and, and something happened there. So you can, ag- again, we're not making excuses here, we're just saying that it's, it's a stat and, uh, and, and, and I pay a lot of attention to it, but this one is kind of right there in the middle for us right now. And then Form ten, uh, Mental Health Act, we're at two. Um, that's interesting that that one's been added by, uh, by our, our, um, our, our statistician, uh, because I don't remember, uh, reading it previously to anybody, and that, uh, the, the Mental Health Act and the Form tens, those mean people that were actually apprehended on the Health Act and taken to the hospital by members. And again, that's something I'm gonna go into. I was at a meeting, uh, about three hours ago that I wanted to just discuss with council as well. Um, hmm, just, uh, going into the general comments, uh, staffing, we have a member that's being transferred out. Um, as you're probably aware, we're, we're currently actually, uh, I think we're sitting at plus one, if not plus, plus two bodies right now, uh, which is nice to have, but, uh, wasn't gonna be permanent, so, uh, he's got his house up for sale and will be transferred relatively soon. Um, I don't know if council's aware right now, but, uh, the Bow Island members are actually working in a lot of times o- out of Red Cliff, they're starting and even ending their shifts, and they're heading out to Bow Island. Uh, there were some, um, OHNS issues identified in the detachment a few months ago down in Bow Island, and um, we're working, um, hand in hand with them as well. So there might be some other changes that, uh, that, that do become permanent, but it, it, it's, it's nice from a lot of different standpoints that we're able to work well with them. Uh, but you do see maybe a few more bodies in and around, uh, town as a result of this. Um, it definitely has increased, uh, uh, the number of vehicles in our parking lot, both, uh, you know, personal vehicles. And I think we've got three of the four Bow Island, uh, vehicles hanging around our detachment as well. Uh, things are working quite well, uh, in, in that sense, and then those members are heading out to their area and, uh, and, and taking things over. We are actually getting, uh, Bow Island's getting a, a, a new member that's gonna be trained, and we're actually gonna be doing a swap. One of our Red Cliff members is gonna go down to Bow Island while the Bow Island member is up here in the Red Cliff and Cypress County area to get trained. We're just a little bit busier and, uh, probably will help the member just get a little bit more of their feet underneath them, uh, for the next six months, and then they'll be rotated back out into Bow Island at that point.
Is this a rookie member?
Yeah. Yeah. So, um, but, but it, it's nice that we have the ability to do that, uh, when you, when you look at, uh, look at that perspective. Um, I, I like it, uh, it lets people just get that little more experience and get used to things. Um, we don't really have any significant occurrences to report unless, uh, anybody recalls something. I was trying to find anything that was, uh, bigger or out of the ordinary, we really didn't have much, so. Um, looking at the annual performance plan, we had, uh, six hundred and forty-six visits to Hamlets up the outside of Red Cliff. Uh, four provincial traffic operations, we're handling those as best we can, uh, given our restrictions under the pandemic. Uh, we've got sixty-five visits to schools. Now, those unfortunately aren't going in and, and, and actually visiting the school. They're more along the lines of school patrols before and after, uh, a school, which is nice to have. Um, nine community group meetings, uh, we finally had a community advisory committee meeting, which was nice. Uh, Council Crozier was, uh, was, was present at that one. Um, we, we did have to cancel one in December as well, unfortunately, but, um, we're hoping to have those up and running right away. Uh, it's nice, we've got a bit of a different group on the community advisory committee now. I feel like I'm, I'm getting some good information from, from, you know, Red Cliff and, and the surrounding communities. And, and definitely get, uh, some more ones out there, cause, uh, that's certainly something that's coming down from, uh, the commanding officer of, of, of Alberta, so we're doing that. Uh, vitro meetings, vi- vitro stands, uh, I've, I've probably covered this before, violence threat risk assessments. Uh, that's done via, with Perry Rose, uh, and, and us working within the, the schools. We've got members that are trained, uh, and this, this is kids that are either threatening violence or potentially threatening to hurt themselves at school, and um, the schools will call us and involve them as necessary on, on those things. Um, before I go into some of the consultation, I was at a, a meeting at about three o'clock today, um, with regards to the regional response to suicides, uh, throughout, uh, you know, Medicine at Red Cliff and Cypress County, because there've been a number of them, and, and, and several of them have been, um, uh, there'd been a connection, uh, amongst the victims of it. Um, there's some bigger solutions that are being looked at in terms of response, not just to straight to suicide, but to concerns regarding people's mental health. Um, I, I should have more that I can present to council later on, uh, but certainly I, I already contacted, uh, Carla this afternoon and then told her I wanted to just get in touch with her in the morning about it, uh, just to kind of work, make sure that, uh, everybody from the town and ourselves are all working on the same, you know, singing from the same songbook. And, uh, you know, if we have other meetings, maybe inviting her to come to it, I, I, I really do appreciate when I can get, um, um, some more people representative from either the, the town or even Cypress County when I'm at some of these meetings. Uh, I, I, I did speak up today, uh, because they're looking at a response, uh, involving Alberta Health Services. Uh, my concerns today, of course, are for both the town and for Cypress County that anything that they, that is created, that's a, a community response, yeah, is involved in the region, uh, which means that they are available to citizens and residents of Red Cliff as well as, as well as Cypress County. Um, so that'd be my, my number one concern i- in dealing with that, that, uh, because sometimes it is better to have, you know, somebody from, uh, like, uh, the, the mental health field, uh, possibly attending, depending on, uh, on somebody's circumstances, uh, rather than having a police officer deal with it. Uh, hopefully that makes sense. Uh, it, it, it's certainly something that, that concerns me greatly, and I will be spending, uh, eh, 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 enough time on it to make sure that, uh, that, that we're getting somewhere and, uh, and, and the citizens of Red Cliff are, are, are gonna be a part of this. Um, it's that time of year that we do consultation, though. Um, I wanted to ask, um, you know, council, uh, you know, with regards to our annual performance plan, you know, things that we're, we always look at every year in town, um, they include, you know, um, you know, uh, traffic, uh, traffic issues, uh, they include visibility within town, uh, you know, being at the schools, uh, you know, some form of community involvement, that sort of thing. Um, is there anything that council feels that is being missed, uh, you know, when I'm, when I'm here and I'm covering things or that you're hearing from, uh, from your constituents, constituents, from, from the residents?
Go ahead, Sean.
Have you been on Broadway and answered that four-way stop?
Yeah.
Not during our peak times, but our non-peak times, there seems to be a lot of rolling stops or non-stops. And, uh, during, during peak times, of course, it's busier and people do stop. It's during the non-peak times, you know, evenings and that sort of thing, that just the rolling stops, and people just need to, you know, do that stop.
Hmm, yeah. Well, that's definitely, you know, and, and at, at off-peak times.
Question for you, Sean, it's in regards to the sheriffs. Are, are they still out of your detachment there?
They are right now, yeah. Um, as it comes down to things, um, I don't know exactly how much longer they're going to be. Um, I, in a lot of cases, I'm the last one to find out, uh, on these things. They're, um, I'm, I'm trying to find the best way to put this because it's a weird, it's a weird thing. They're still working out of the detachment, but they're not working as closely with us as they did in the past, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
They're kind of roped in with, um, uh, the, the, the sheriffs that are working out of the Dunmore Scales to a certain extent.
Right.
Um, so, I mean, as it sits right now, yes, they're in the detachment, but, um, you know what, I can, I can certainly tell council that that's, uh, something that I've asked questions about in terms of how much longer that, that relationship is going to be, just as a general thing, I, I, I think that it's something everybody wants to know about.
Well, they used to do, you know, they, they used to patrol sometimes that four-way stop, and, and I haven't seen them there in forever. I haven't seen them in town doing any patrols or, or anything, and I knew, I, I used to see them, and, and that was why mainly I was asking, is because I never see them. And, and the other question is that I have is in regards to stop checks, and, and was there any done in the, you know, recent while, or is it just random, just nothing?
And that, and, and that's a fair question. Now, given the pandemic, we're not doing the, the static check stops that we had been doing. And, uh, and, and I hear you, uh, from a visibility standpoint, from, uh, you know, from a community being able to see that the members are out there doing that sort of thing, I, a hundred percent, I, I would think that there's value in that. It's just, given, uh, the optics of us being out there wearing masks and, 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 you know, leaning into vehicles with people and things like that, what we've been trying to do is do a more of a, of a, of a moving them check stop for the time being. Uh, hopefully, we can get back to doing what we had been doing at some point in the near future, once the vaccine rollouts have come out. But we, we have been, um, pretty much actively discouraged from doing that for the time being.
Thank you, Sean.
Can you else have any questions?
Sean, I guess I would like to ask you a, a question, and it involves, um, what our, uh, Minister of Justice is looking into about starting a provincial police force because they believe that that'll make Alberta more autonomous and, I guess, have more power in, in Canada?
Okay.
Because I, I, I just received tonight a, a letter from Mr. Madu and what they were asking for, so they're asking for if we are contracting with RCMP, and they know we are, then they want to know all of our, uh, contract, yearly contracts from twenty seventeen till even up to twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. And because they've got, I think, Price Waterhouse or somebody like that doing, um, a study to see if provincially it's a viable thing versus an RCMP, and they, they claim they've been talking with K Division, so I guess I was gonna ask you, do you know if that is an active conversation?
Yes, uh, and I believe that, uh, the price water, Alice Cooper, tonight.
Sean, if you can hear me, you broke up a little bit, so hopefully you can try again. Are you there?
Yeah, please.
It looks like he's frozen.
Yes. That's how you look last week, Larry. Okay. What do we do when we get a glitch like this?
No, he's gone altogether.
Sean, Erica has messaged him and asked him to leave and try and come back.
Oh, okay, so that definitely he has left, so. We'll hopefully wait a minute and he'll come back.
Hello?
Hi, we can hear you.
Hang on, I, my internet just, I don't know what the heck just happened there. Is that better?
That's way better.
Okay.
As soon as you're here.
Good, good, no, my, uh, suddenly I didn't have, uh, I didn't have internet. Um, anyway, I'm not sure where I was sitting at right there, but we, basically, we've been told that we know this is going on, uh, and that we may be requested for information, obviously, uh, you know, the town of Red Cliff has been asked, probably, you know, with other municipalities. Um, you know, the, the, I really don't know what, uh, it, it, it ends up being a bit of a political issue, and I'm not sure, you know, uh, i- if you have any specific questions for me in relation to it or anything like that. I can tell you, I'm not going anywhere right now, but, um, you know, outside of that, uh, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm open, and, and i- if council's got some questions that I can't answer, I can certainly, uh, ask those and get back to you.
Uh, like I said, I was just wondering how much, um, consultation they'd already done with, with the RCMP themselves, or if they're just going around asking all the municipality?
I think that they're asking questions at the, at the K Division level at this point. Um, I, I haven't been told, you know, uh, as I said, I, nobody's asked me for any specific information, and probably most of the info that they would want would be retrievable, uh, from another spot. I mean, if they're looking at, uh, you know, file counts or, you know, what detachment sizes look like, or, or things like that, all of that stuff is easily provided via K Division.
Okay. Uh, anybody else have any more questions?
One more. Um, so with all these statistics that you, um, supply us with, are they just Red Cliffs, or they Red Cliffs and the county and area?
This is only the town.
Okay.
So this is only, I, I, I get a separate provincial one. Um, and, and, and if you want to see those ever, I can certainly give those to you. I just, I, I provide the town with the municipal statistics, cause I, 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 I've actually never asked, really, and I guess I should have. I, I just assumed that the, the council probably wouldn't be too interested in, in, in Cypress County statistics. And vice versa, when I go to Cypress County, I, I only speak about, really about Cypress County to them.
No, that's good, thank you.
Eric?
Uh, that, that brings up an interesting point, though. Is there any way of us comparing ourselves to the rest of the province when it comes to that kind of, uh, or this kind of organization?
Hmm, um, I get the sta- statistics for other places. It's, um, like, would you be trying to find a town that's about a similar size? Is that what you'd be looking at, or, or a few?
That's actually the same, uh, same population, you know, there's a point of what is our typical, it's Barhead, it's Stettler, Stettler, few other communities around our range. It'd be interesting to know what and how we compare with those, the statistics in their regions as well.
Um, you know, a fair question, uh, can you let me get back to you on that?
Absolutely.
Okay, no, I'll, I'll look at Barhead, Stettler, I'll compare some, I'll, I'll see if I can find a couple more as well and, and do different areas of the province. So, I mean, I'm familiar with where Barhead and Stettler are, but might be nice, somebody in, you know, if there's something in the southwestern portion and maybe a little further north, that sort of thing.
Okay, thank you very much.
No problem.
Any other questions? Okay, well, thank you very much. Okay, well, thank you very much, Sean, for the presentation tonight.
All right, welcome. No, if anybody's got any other questions, uh, you guys know how to reach me. I know I, I speak to Sean fairly regularly sometimes, I think. Oh, it's fine, absolutely. I, 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 I'm glad, I'm glad people are comfortable contacting me and saying hi or, or asking some questions. I, 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 I wanna, I, I like that. That, that's, that's all I can really say, so, thanks.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Good night. Somebody want to move information?
I'll make that motion.
All right. All in favor, receiving for information. Opposed, that is carried. Okay, moving on to minutes. We have council minutes of January 25th for our. Larry, Larry. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor. Opposed, that is carried. And Red Cliff and District Recreation Committee for information. Eric. Any questions, concerns?
Well, these are unexpected. There was information on our, that was missed on our, on our most, our, I'll play out here.
I'm not sure which information you think is not there.
Um, we missed information from our last meeting on, from our grant money that we're doing this summer. Was that missed?
Our grant money, what I call the projects done?
Yes, we missed a portion under whole business.
So you just didn't do it?
No, it was just, it was a line that was missed, gratification. Just gratification.
So you did talk about it, it's just not on here?
It's just not, that's all.
Well, okay. It's really not so much important here because we just see them unapproved. You got that to get that straightened out the next meeting. Any other questions or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor. Opposed, that is carried. Okay, moving on to bylaws. We have bylaw nineteen eighteen, twenty twenty-one, town of Red Cliff procedural bylaw, first reading. Option one, clear. Any questions or concerns?
Your worship.
Go ahead, Larry.
With the communications by law, I think we should strike ninety-three and ninety-four. I don't think it would stand up in, uh, in a court of law. It just makes us look bad. It looks like a bunch of bullies. Uh, and it infringes on people's rights, which I don't think they have the right to do.
So these aren't changes, these have been in there all along?
Well, I think we should just take it out. I don't know what use it does other than make us look bad.
Any, thanks Larry, any other questions or concerns? Seeing none, I guess all in favor then of first reading. Opposed. It is carried. Right, then moving on to bylaw nineteen nineteen, twenty twenty-one, record retention and disposition bylaw, first reading. Any questions or concerns about that particular bylaw? Seeing none. Oh, yes.
Should we work one area that's similar? No, wasn't this one?
Well, I guess the only question I have with this one is in the old bylaw, there is the actual list of how long things will be kept. And in the new bylaw, I'm assuming that that isn't going to be in there. That's not.
No, it'll be in a binder. But we can put in the, the short version.
Is there a reference in this bylaw to that list? Because this list isn't just made up by some past musical manager or Shannon. This is, I'm assuming, some sort of legal.
Yeah. Yes, it's made up by the, um, there's a schedule by the province that we have to adhere to. And then there is the legislation on accounting, finance stuff. And so all of those resources are utilized in the creation. Um, the binder makes the list bigger, but it also allows for a historical keep of something. So if, if Shannon were to, to come in and say this document has some historical value, we could keep it longer than the retention schedules we currently have.
Right. And, and, and that's in the bylaw, whereas if we think something has historical significance, we don't have to destroy it. Well, I think what the main gist of this is rather than keep everything, as soon as we can destroy something, we will. Yet some things we can never destroy, like council minutes are forever and ever and ever.
Yeah, and, and that's in provincial legislation.
I just. Okay, are you just saying it's redundant by having it in here as well since they're already in the MGA?
It's, it's in the MGA. Um, what it does is if we have a retention schedule with the, the reasons why we're keeping something, it stands up as much as having it in the, in the bylaw, other than having to amend the bylaw when they change legislation.
So I guess in the future, for a new counselor, when they read this bylaw, they will have no idea what that list is because that list won't be there. It'll be somewhere else, right? Like.
Yes.
That we won't have really any right to see.
You always have the right to see, sir.
Well, not everything we have the right to see, right? Okay, no, I just, I'm sure there's people that don't know how long we have to say something.
We would probably create, uh, the retention schedules in a PDF to put with the other documents you get at the beginning of, of your term.
Well, like I say, we, we should all know it because we've all had this old bylaw on our USD stack. But, and I know we dealt with this, well, this isn't even that old, Ernie Reimer actually initially developed. But, no, that, that would be my only question, why it wasn't attached to. Let's first read. Any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor. Opposed, that is carried. Request for decision, twenty twenty-one A U M A resolutions. Anybody have any great revolutions they would like to put forward? None for great revolutions. Oh, oh, yes.
Let's make a motion to receive information.
Yeah, we have a little while longer to come up with something until June. But, I don't know. I wonder if, just paying back all these grants. Uh, there's talk that's, that's government, maybe it's a provincial sales council. I wonder, should lobby a guest. That's what there's talk that it may be. They can talk about that being covered. They sure have, but just in my mind of building this.
This is.
Problem. Yeah. Part of the law, it's something that hasn't happened yet.
You might be open on your cat or, but I'm sure it's not good. Oh, right, we forgot, well, that's.
Yeah, well, you know what? The new budget will be out before two thirty.
And, yeah, that's, that's where it's going to be.
And the school representation and all that other one. And the MSI grants because Mr., Mr. MacGyver would not release those secret information last week during phone conversations because he can lose his job if he leak information about. I didn't know about that. Anyway. I think there's some problem. Anyway. Nobody, did somebody put this on the floor?
Yeah.
Oh, did you want to do? Yeah. All right. Nothing else, all in favor for information. Opposed, that is carried. Think of some, we're doing. All right, business licensing fees, request for decision. Larry?
I'd like to move that the business license fees should remain in effect as per bylaw nineteen sixteen, twenty twenty, fees rates and changes by law.
That's option one, one that Mike wanted.
That's option one, yes.
Stay with our infinite wisdom. Okay, just a minute, I gotta write Larry move that before. Any discussion? Bill?
We, um, at the, the pre-meeting with staff this afternoon, determined we should clarify option two as that is intended as for home occupation licenses only as well.
Okay. Well, that was all that was on the list. Right?
Yeah, but we didn't specifically say home occupation.
Correct. Okay. Clarify.
Thank you.
Sean?
Well, number one, to begin with, we are not medicine half. And we shouldn't be competing with them and we shouldn't be comparing ourselves when it comes to business with them. Um, I, I feel that the less than four thousand dollars should not be a deal breaker to keep our residents happy. Um, we are here to represent them. This was something that was brought up by the residents. Um, and, and there are so many communities out there that have completely done away with business licenses. And right now, small businesses are really struggling. And I feel that by increasing the fees to these home businesses is really affecting our community. Um, but when we look at COVID nineteen and so many people have had job losses and revenue losses, this really is not the year to increase fees.
You want, uh, so, sorry. Yeah, go ahead, Eric. I, I, I see your point and I would agree with it, but I would also caution against the one of possible new overnight Apple businesses because they're so big. I would, I would be a little cautious that way. I would certainly be okay with any current businesses that have that, waving that need. But I'd be hesitant against anything new, but not just mine.
So what this is all about is that we have increased the fee. So the original fee for a home business was twenty-seven dollars. And it was increased to the fifty-five dollars, which is business license on top of the home occupancy fee. So, so there is an increase, substantial increase over double. So we're already talking, people are struggling, that now we're adding on over double the fee. I'd like to see it roll back to what it was last year's fee for this year.
Great, to be a little less dramatic there, you're right, it is double and it is also two dollars a month. These people probably also got, see about sixty thousand dollars and three, twenty thousand dollars. I don't know if you are toward, I don't think twice that long. Make or break for these people. Now, is it the time to increase? Different question, Eric. I see your hand up, Larry.
On round four, zero, three, four, four.
I feel. Yeah, they don't think, sorry, I, I lost trade thought. Go ahead, go ahead, Larry.
I feel that these, uh, there are a lot of business licenses here. And these people can write their business licenses off. They can write part of their, uh, home or vehicle off. There's a lot of benefits to being a home occupancy business. And every time that you, uh, it's, it's a minor cost that they're paying. And if, if they get a, if they get a break here, you're going to make it harder for other people. Somebody's going to have to pay this contribution to our budget. And there are going to be less and less shops in town. Because every time that you do something in a home-based business, you're actually a competition to somebody who was paying tens of thousands of dollars perhaps in a shop business. And this is just a minor, a minor cost. And, uh, the people that have the shops and are paying the high taxes are affected by COVID everybody, every bit as much as the home occupancies. I think the home occupancy permit actually has, uh, it's good for a year. And I don't think that's changed. And I don't think the business license has changed either. I don't think a whole lot has changed. I think there's a little bit of confusion when you read the business license, um, bylaw. Because it says go to page two or page B, whatever it is, I forget now. And that, that's where the rates are, but the rates are actually in our rates by law. Um, and that could be straightened out, but I don't think this is onerous to, to ask somebody who's in business and competing with somebody else to pay a little bit of tax.
Okay, Sean, you had your hand up. Hopefully it's new.
Yeah, um, we, we have received some most funding. And was all of that, is there any that could be used per stage wars?
Not for business of anything. Uh, we logged all of the funds that we had.
Okay, so I would like to say a couple of things. Um, number one, to say that something has doubled, I would say is false. Because I've had a home occupancy since nineteen ninety-four. And to be honest with you, since nineteen ninety-four, it's been eighty-two fifty. And actually, two years ago, Arlo's was here. And it was this council. We changed the, we started to change the business licenses. And what happened in the very first year that it happened, we reduced, if you have a home occupancy with nobody coming to your house, it's twenty-seven fifty or something like that. And if you have people visiting your house, it's still eighty-two fifty. But when we reduced that home occupancy, what was also supposed to come into it was the fact that you actually had to buy a license for what you were doing. Because everybody just had a home occupancy license. They did not have a plumbing license or a hairdresser's license or a beautician or whatever license you want to call it. They just had a home occupancy and that could be absolutely anything. And so what was supposed to happen was you now have to buy, and this is what the person whose information is in this package. So they have a saw sharpening, sharpening business. They have to buy a license. My home occupancy showed up this year, same thing. I, I have my twenty-seven fifty because nobody. My home occupancy showed up this year, same thing. I, I have my twenty seven fifty, because nobody comes to my house, but I have a general contractor's license of seventy five dollars on top of that. So, yeah, compared to last year's twenty seven fifty, it's actually triple, but that was actually supposed to happen and didn't a year ago. Now, this is the way it's supposed to be. Um, I know this is COVID, and times aren't good, but if, if seventy five dollars makes or breaks your year for a business license, really, then you probably don't need the business license. I, like I say, I, I don't see where this is an issue. I do know that, and you say that Madison Hat doesn't matter, but it does, because Madison Hat comes to Red Cliff and gets a business license for seventy five or fifty five dollars, because they have a building in Madison Hat. If I go to the city, or Larry goes to the city, we pay hundreds of dollars to access their license there. Like, I have, and nothing is under a hundred bucks there. Like, a general contractor's license is a hundred and two fifty, a plumbing license is a hundred and two fifty, a heat metal license is a hundred and two fifty. And every time you wanna do something different, you actually need to have them all. So, we aren't being punitive. We're correcting an error from last year. And it's funny how some people will pick that they went, that now they needed them both. Well, on the other hand, as counselors, we approved this budget. We approved that whole process, and now we don't like it, because we had a complaint on Facebook. I, I struggle, because people complain every day on Facebook. Okay, go ahead, Shawna.
I understand that people complain every day, and we're not gonna police everyone. My point was, is that this isn't the year for the increase. And, and there is communities giving a total, all business licenses have been waived. And saying that, I'd like this to be a recorded vote.
Okay. Does anybody else have anything they'd like to say? Okay, so Larry made the motion. Number one, option one, all in favor of option one? Eric, Chris, Dwight, and Larry? Opposed? Kathy, Jim, and Shawna? And it's carried. Great. So, policies, policy number eleven, frigid prepayment policies for consideration. Somebody like to put that on the floor?
Kathy.
Anybody have any questions? Shawna.
Um, that's the one that had kind of a wording issue, um, where it's scratched out things. It goes to say, due to stop-loss penalties imposed by the lending institution, sometimes it is in the best interest of the community to borrow rather than pre-K amounts borrow. It just, to me, does not sound right.
Mike, so that's essentially if we were to borrow that money upfront and then, and then repay it right away instead of carrying on that debt the entire time. Uh, there's the stop-loss penalty is being imposed, and it's too complicated to pay them off right away, so then we're just sitting on a whole bunch of debt for a little, little bit of borrowing that we need upfront.
So, should it say, rather than prepaid amounts period, or is it prepaid amounts borrowed? Are you borrowing the prepaid amounts?
Yes, the, we used to borrow everything. I think that's what this was saying, that we would borrow all of it, but we wanna kinda get away from that and not have to borrow if we don't have to.
I understand that, but doesn't sound like that's what they said here. It's word is very awkward. Yeah.
I don't, I read that, and I don't get hung up on it. It's saying two different things. The first one is saying, the first line, that's not changing, is saying it's, it's easier to have these fridges prepaid by the town. And, and if you do borrow, then the stop-loss penalties make it prohibitive to prepay after. Then you're better off borrowing, you know, then you're better off making your payments the whole term. So, I, neither one of those lines, in my opinion, is cooler. They are saying two different things, though. I, I think maybe you're trying to read the same thing into both of the sentences when they say different things.
It, it, to me, it just doesn't. It is in the best interest of the community to borrow rather than prepaid amounts borrow?
Basically, the change in this policy just says, the policy before said, we will always borrow for all fridges. The change really here is, we just can't. It's just changing the wording, so that the, the policy itself is only saying, we can't. It's not forcing us to borrow for all fridges. We're saying, we can't. We don't have to, but we can get. That's essentially what the change is.
I guess, even if you think it's awkward, is it wrong? Because if you took amounts borrowed off the end of that sentence, then it wouldn't be saying it twice, and it would be cleaner. But I don't know if it's actually going to say exactly the same thing. Right, one, first one says that the town can prepay, second one says the town can borrow, and then the policy actually says that they may borrow or prepay.
It gives options.
Yeah, the, because, like I say, both those two lines say the two things that are lumped into the policy. So, if we took amounts borrowed off, would that be cleaner? Go ahead.
Would you like us to take it back and take a crack at cleaning up the wording, making it straighter?
We were hoping we could just do that on the fly.
Yeah, you can.
Because I think that, that sentence then doesn't leave too much hanging. Due to stop-loss penalties imposed by the lending institution, sometimes it is in the best interest of the community to borrow rather than prepay.
Yes, that sounds better.
But then we don't have to worry about the stop-loss penalty. Sometimes we borrow, sometimes we prepay, but what we don't wanna do is borrow and then try to pay it off early because of the stop-loss penalty.
Right.
Well, that's three things. Maybe you should take it back. I don't know, because that's really what you're trying to say, because we either prepay or we borrow, but don't borrow and then try to prepay.
Right.
It doesn't, I agree, it's not, it doesn't sound smooth. Got you. Well, Kathy made the motion. What do you think, Kathy?
Somebody wanna make sense of that we said that Kathy told us.
Yeah, I think that, uh, policy we gave first reading to actually says that if we're gonna table it or send it back to the new legal review.
I would do a little bit of that.
Okay.
I'll just withdraw my motion and replace it with, uh, move the administration to redraft policy number zero one one of prepaid policy to, uh, clarify the wording.
Okay.
Back it back.
Sure.
And then make sense of that. I've already given us a question.
So, you withdrew number one and motion number two.
Number one, motion is not needed for it.
I'm not recording. Any? You stop, Gary. Policy number seventy three, rest manager, Jim. Any questions or concerns? None? All in favor? Opposed? Carried? Policy number ninety five, self-administered supplementary pension plan, management employee. Chris? Any? See, done. All in favor? Opposed? That is carried, and policy number one, request for, for dedication. Shawna?
I move for option number one, to the office.
Any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Moving on to correspondence, letter from our minister, member of parliament Glenn Mottz, the twenty twenty one priority survey for consideration. I think that was emailed out to all you guys a few weeks ago, right?
Yeah.
But he was asking for one letter, so that's why I asked that he put in here. I don't know, did you guys all send him a letter?
No.
Oh, okay. Do we want to send him a letter?
I think, I think the mayor should send him a letter. I may not have a good pick there.
Do you want the letter to say? Well, when I read these, I actually thought they were a little bit pointy, but maybe it's just me, maybe.
Very quick question. All of the above? Well, that's the right answer.
Of course. So, I, I really don't know. I, what I would like, maybe, is if we really had something that we would like Glenn to work for on our behalf, maybe this would be a good time to send him a letter rather than send back his survey. Yeah, the double gas tax was nice there a few years ago, but I mean, that, that was just a one-time shot, right? I, I don't know. I, we don't usually get a lot of federal money. They don't, they don't. So.
I think one of them, one of them, there was access for smaller groups of families to get access to money, wasn't it?
Yeah, one of them.
At number six, improve that to federal programs.
There you go, yeah. But even that, that's, none of those are actually grants. I guess, no, there is just one, which you might be, check that one off.
Like I say, I, I don't know.
They're all right answers. I could not check one of them. No, we want more ready to date.
Yeah, well, that's what I mean, it's.
We want more to cover that. Maybe one, one person.
Well, like you say, I, if anybody had something that maybe you think that we need a lobbyist for, to be a good time. But he did one by the sixteen, wasn't it the sixteen? I don't, was it the twenty four?
It's sixteen.
Sixteen, there it is, yeah. Yeah, this would, this is our only council meeting before that deadline. Yeah, that would be right after founding day.
Well, it does say there were the top concerns, and, and we do have huge infrastructure challenges, right, trying to keep up with all of it.
Well, we're not keeping up.
Well, that's what I mean, that, that should be something that can address. Like, how, how, we're not keeping up, and our infrastructure is slowly deteriorating faster than we can keep operating, so it should be something that that I could be talked about. And, and if, if Perry Rose is looking at sometime in the future, um.
Hey, Jim, Jim said we should just write him a letter with some of our concerns. Say that. Any other discussion or concerns? Larry, you're very quiet.
Yeah, I, I don't, left information, but.
Well, we'll put some letter to him.
Didn't, didn't everybody do that, uh, that survey anyway?
Most people did it, because it really said to look it over and send him one copy.
Yeah, he only wanted one letter.
So, if you sent it to him, you might have already done us a favor.
I don't know, maybe I shouldn't have.
All right. All in favor of Jim's motion?
How are you serving?
Opposed, carried. All right, citizen letter with COVID restrictions and reopenings. Shawna?
I go first.
Go ahead.
So, very curious, it ended up on our agenda, but yet all his information or their information is all blocked out. Is there a certain reason why we couldn't know who sent the letter?
Uh, Foye. It's a public document, so we need to protect his privacy as part of your general agenda package. I use that term loosely, meaning he or she.
Um, I gotta agree with this guy. Why don't we send a letter to show our support for regional coaching? Work.
Of course.
So, do we know who this is from, like it's all blacked out?
Good question. That's a great question.
I'm glad you're in the same meeting as we are. Larry, I think your game is on, uh, you.
We do know, some of us know who this is from. But, but when I forwarded it to Erica, I guess they thought that for Foye reasons to put it into the council package, they would take his name out, but I did let him know in a reply that we were going to put it on the agenda, and he was happy with that. The city of Madison Hat and the county of Cypress have fashioned letters that basically wanted to start a conversation about regional openings, even though, uh, the opening today, the province lifted some of this person's concerns. It, they're still, with our low numbers, they were hoping that they might be able to get a quicker release than some other places. I think it was. I think it was, I'm going to say it was Thursday when, um, Dr. Henshaw, Mr. Kenny, and Mr. MacGyver, MacGyver had a phone conversation and we could all press star three and ask questions. I, I never did get out of the queue to ask mine, but, uh, there was one mayor that asked about a regional approach. And the closest Dr. Henshaw was willing to go was by health zone, which all of a sudden, if you look at our south zone, that's not very helpful because the southeast part of the zone has no COVID and the southwest part of the zone is the highest per capita in Alberta. So we're kind of, if we just stick to zone, we're still kind of in a bad spot. Because I think Lethbridge has been getting ten to fifteen COVID cases a day lately in the news. So their numbers are up in the county of Lethbridge and Tabor and the county of Tabor, Cardston, all those areas are getting huge numbers and they're affecting the south zone. So I would say Lethbridge Hospital is probably worried and Mesna Hospital thinking little.
Thirteen today.
In Mesna?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, take it back.
Well, one in hospital.
Well, but they had that one outbreak in the hospital. Eight and two, so, and, and county forty mile had zero, so we were sitting very well in the east. And these people, of course, the talk was even our two MLAs were talking regional with not much traction. And like I say, when the two neighboring municipalities send out their letters, that's when I asked Erica if she could put this on here too, because we should at least all be in unison. But the problem with going, if you want to release on numbers, then you can die on numbers too. If sixteen is the flavor today, then all of a sudden that's not so good.
Something a little fishy for a thousand. Well, yeah, we don't have a hundred thousand in this area, right? You know, there's only eighty thousand of us altogether, right?
I know, but it doesn't take much.
No, it doesn't. I mean, I think we're allowed five in Cypress County, right?
Yeah, there's ten thousand in Redcliffe, Cypress County, that's what the.
I think eleven thousand, two hundred.
Yeah.
So nonetheless, but I always like regional approach and the simple solution that doesn't seem to be talked about is just ID your customer. Where do you live? Where's your, where's your address?
That's what Mr. Pluston had alluded to, it, you almost have to start.
That's not so bad.
Looking, like I say, I, their letters weren't, they were just to open a conversation, they weren't extreme. Like Cypress County's letter is in here, it's get past the, the one doctor survey.
But I know the Alberta governor, the mayor's Dr. Henshaw, so said she didn't like the regional approach. Somebody said it higher because then it would just encourage people to go to the.
Cross traffic, but you just have to show your ID. Well, and I don't see people from Lethbridge coming here just because.
That's very common and it isn't there.
But I don't, I, like I say, I just put it here, I said it when.
But who, who the Sean, she said to receive information?
Yeah.
Could we write a letter instead? Just proceeding information.
It, it seems to me that we're trying to put pressure on, on Dr. Henshaw and people that are making decisions here. And in retrospect, I think they tried that in Ontario. We're right across the street, they had different, uh, different regulations and that didn't work out well. It's similar to you saying we don't want to hamper people from Lethbridge coming here and we absolutely don't. But you've got to take these things into consideration.
I think the density of population is much higher there, obviously, so you're going to have more of that interaction, interlacing between regions. Where we can, we have the same problem.
You know, I, I, I don't pretend to be smarter than Dr. Henshaw, so I, I, I'm going to kind of defer the decision to her, but.
Hey, well, you made a good point there, Larry. Kathy?
Probably wouldn't hurt just to stand with our neighboring municipalities, just to request the dialogue open because by the time they start the dialogue, it might actually be a point where they'll start with, with the regionals.
Or closing some more.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I really don't.
It's hard to talk, yeah.
I will be honest with you, um, I did reply to this fellow, he actually started writing me in, in December. And, uh, my, my first reply to him was, I'm not going to say, I actually hadn't approached him until Larry and that shocked me. Because I actually said that we don't get all of the information, like the province is looking at this thing as a whole. Dr. Henshaw is, should be way more of the expert than we are. So we have been just following the rules, not trying to break them. I, the discussion thing, in my opinion, isn't, can't be hurtful, but again, I'm not, it's not going to be my sole policy. And just when the city, the city did it on Monday and, and that Cypress County did it on Tuesday, so that's why I thought, well, then we should talk about it here too. I, I'm not, I don't have a strong feeling on either side of this issue. That's a.
Sorry, I cut you off, um, I'm not saying that I'm smarter than Dr. Henshaw, I don't want to, like, why do you rule the regional approach? Because I think Dr. Henshaw's position is health and wellness mainly. And she, she doesn't make sense, she gives guidance on her opinion to just, and he interprets the information and makes up policy.
No, that is the whole.
Well, somebody does, yeah.
Yeah, sorry, it's not Henshaw, no, she gives guidance, but she's health first and foremost, right? She, it's not her job to care about your economy.
No.
So I, I think just sending a letter doesn't say that we're smarter than her, that we're trying to undermine her or anything. Just, they were saying, hey, we are worried about. Yeah, we're worried about our region and our well-being and economy here, which of course everybody is, it's, so they were done it, but we were just stating it. I, I don't think it's us saying that we're smarter than them, because certainly we're not smarter than Dr. Henshaw. People on my Facebook are smarter than Dr. Henshaw.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Well, no, you made the motion. I can't change everything. That's what's up to you. Right now, you made the motion to receive information and that's what is on the board. Go ahead.
Can I rescind my motion and send out a letter stating that we would like to see more of the regional approach and beyond the same half for the same dialogue as the city?
Could we say toward that, uh, I don't know, so if we want to get with it, that we would, we'd like the IDing portion of it.
And by IDing, what would you then say, you're, you'd have to be from Cypress County, Mesna, or Redcliffe?
From our region, yeah.
Or county forty mile, like where do you draw the line?
Well, from, from another region that doesn't have any house restrictions. Because we are, just from our region, we are considering the south region unless we split it. Right, but maybe we would just say, uh, Cypress County.
They actually do have tracking apps. Maybe every, you should, could subscribe to them.
I know, just from talking to my parents back east right now, if you're from the whole Dexter Jar, but you are not welcome both sides of the Dexter Jar. They're actually using entrance.
Is that groundbreaking, I feel?
It's not groundbreaking. The word is different.
Well, the eastern provinces made their bubble right at the start last year. And then they even got worse, then they, they didn't even, they quit getting along even as PEI and Nova Scotia and Newfoundland were actually wanted, New, New Brunswick was. Now they're, they've divided again as soon as somebody started getting some cases.
There was, there was actually a big fight my family Christmas.
That creates an awkward conversation.
All right, so Shauna has changed her motion now that we stand in unison with the city and the county to start a conversation about regional reopening. Okay? Any more questions or concerns? All in favor? All right, it is carried. Okay. Municipal District of Bonneville, meaning for a stronger Western Canadian municipal advocate for information.
See, I'm.
Kathy. Any questions or concerns? These were the ones that said in the restaurant, before restaurants were allowed to open. And there was like that. Anyway, any questions or concerns? All in favor of receiving for information? It is carried. Might even ask for posting. Okay, Municipal District of Spirit River, free the COVID nineteen lockdown for information. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, that is carried. McKenzie County, reopening recreational and business services.
See information, that's already started.
Right. It's a hazard of, we must have our meetings later and everybody else. Any questions or concerns? All in favor of receiving for information? Opposed, that is carried. And Town of High River, reinstatement of the nineteen seventy-six coal development policy.
Information is back in the morning. It was on the news tonight.
Was it? Okay. Because I was actually getting emails from all over, people, I think, just email, there must be an app that you can email every mayor. Because I, they even apologize that they don't live in Redcliffe, they live in Lethbridge, they live in wherever, but yes, this would affect their water. You got emails from other people? Okay.
Or from Lethbridge, yeah.
None, I'm sure that's possible.
We already got a call from one.
Yeah, they, well, they wanted these. Okay. Kathy, who did that one, sorry, did I want to see again? Any questions or concerns? All in favor? Opposed, that is carried. And the letter from Cypress County for information, Shauna? Any questions or concerns? All in favor? Opposed, that is carried. Okay, the municipal manager reports to council. Information. Jim? Shauna?
Is there anything you would like to point out or something that didn't make this list before, want to let us know about?
Sure, so Darren advised that the resurfacing of the pool is complete. The deputy mayor, mayor change, Shannon would like you to know February twenty-third, Chris is the deputy mayor.
He was building food at your restaurant.
Your new iPads are here for council, if you have any questions or need any help, please see Mike. Um, Shannon wanted me to let you know that we've been given new information from the province, so she has to update the election package on the web. The second part of the policing summit is on February seventeenth. And upgrades in chambers will start on February twenty-third.
Okay. Shauna?
Uh, directed to Cory, have there been any issues yet on the water lines breathing?
Uh, we've got four so far, proposed on every set in the mobile, we've tried to the house, getting their calls based on basement. So once they, we've advised them, open the door, put some air and crack the bathtub, they've opened it all.
Just a tap, not a tub. Well, I saw that you had put that out on Facebook. And it was a new one because there was the, the advice that, yes, it costs money to run water, but it's cheaper than the bill to fix the road. Yeah. There's a safe word right inside of the community guide.
That must have been a good one, brought, fourth down, second street.
Hello. That would, that would be, uh, who first, another bright thing.
It was quite a crew over there for a long time.
That was a long one, yeah.
My personal favorite is when the water line does breathe through the wall and first have the running water. Can't see a more than running your tap.
So Phyllis alluded to the policing thing. Um, now, the first meeting was that thirty-one pager that Tony sent us all, right?
Yes.
Okay, and that's fine, I, I read that, it was kind of motherhoody statements and all that wonderful stuff, I'm glad they're working. Um, the second one is going to be more a talk on provincial police versus RCMP and KTV. So I guess I would like to know what everybody's thoughts are on that. Because if somebody's actually going to be attending and listening, they, they say something, go ahead.
I will definitely be attending and listening. I'll want to know what they want to say.
Okay. Anybody else, if anybody, do you have an opinion whether we should be going down that road or not?
You know?
If it isn't broken, don't fix it.
Well, I, I don't know, honestly, so like I say, I.
Cost savings or something.
Well. I, I, I don't know, like, like I say, I just got that email tonight from, I imagine the town got it too? From Mr. Madu?
No, sir, we have not.
Okay, well, they came, I would say it was probably five o'clock when I got it, like it was very late. And that's why I asked if Sean had gotten anything. And, yeah, they want to know what we're paying every year. Because of course, and the province has been jockeying, well, obviously, last year they started telling counties that the counties would have to start paying, they were no longer going to be getting policing for free. Well, there's just a whole bunch of government shortfalls happening right now and the recovery process. Again, there's only one taxpayer and I don't know how that will look. I don't know if a province, a provincial police system will do us better than federal, I do know that I, I believe that having federal with no lines, if something has to cross the border, should be a good thing, but I don't, I don't know. I don't know what they're thinking of provincial police. We've never negotiated anything.
You've been around when, uh, we decided to, uh, drop our own police force and go with the Mesna police force because it was cheaper, okay? It was cheaper for two years and then it's, no. About two years that it was cheaper than our own police force was, then it started climbing and climbing and climbing. Then all of a sudden we went with the RCMP because the RCMP was still cheaper than Mesna police force. And they might send out a police force, a provincial police force, and it might be cheaper for a year or two or three or four. And then they'll lose us. I'm comfortable with the RCMP and I think that they're doing a good job, why not just leave it the way it is?
Well, I don't even know if we have a say in it.
That's, that's my rant and I'm done.
I'm glad that you're not listening, I appreciate that. Well, anybody can, like, like, anybody can listen in to it.
What's that?
That is seventeen.
Is it seventeen, sorry? Is it something, sorry?
And it's from three to six.
Three o'clock.
There a link there or something that I need?
You should have gotten an email.
Okay, I'll check, yeah.
Check with Tonya, or, or you might, you sent that out to everybody too?
I did, but I can, can send you, you might like.
Sent it out to us.
I'm not, I, I haven't listened to it.
Yeah, it'll, and again, I, it's, it's just the AUMA talking about it, so I have no idea, that's not Soul Gen talking about it. But Soul Gen is the one that sent me the letter looking for the costs over from twenty-seventeen to twenty-twenty-two.
For us.
Yes.
Yeah.
Wondering what we're paying by contract, and.
Like I say, I, I don't know.